The next case is 593, 2023, Prince George's County versus County Council of Prince George's County. Good morning. Mr. Nelson, how are you?
Morning. Mason Nelson and Alex Vlota on behalf of the citizen appellantants in this case. Our clients are watching online, which is one of the highest features of the new system. So they're here, but online. This case is a land use case arising out of Prince George's County. It concerns the Prince George's County zoning ordinance, section 27, 21382, which is the ordinance which governs how an applicant in Prince George's County applies for rezoning to the MXT zone. And it sets forth two requirements here that are relevant to our discussion this morning. The first is that the applicant must prove that the application will not substantially impair the integrity of the approved plans, the general plan, the master plans. That's the first requirement. And the second, the applicant must prove that the application is consistent with the purposes or is in keeping with the purposes of the MXT zone. So those are what we think are the required findings. Those are the required findings that govern the analysis of this application. And as we all know, in these land use cases, every county has a planning department which reviews these applications. And the planning staff of Prince George's did its review and recommended disapproval. At extract 37, it found that the proposed rezoning substantially impaired the integrity of the general plan. Extract 37. At extract 38, the planning department found that the proposed rezoning substantially impairs the integrity of the master plan. That's extract 38. And extract 40, the planning department found, staff found that the proposed rezoning is not in keeping with the purposes of the MXT zone. Staff recommended disapproval. Now, you know, every county has its own mechanism for processing applications, but one of the unique characteristics for rezoning applications such as this in Prince George's is that the district council refers the case to the zoning hearing examiner for proposed findings of fact and law. And that's what happened in this case. And the zoning hearing examiner conducted a hearing and rejected what staff recommended and recommended approval of the application. My clients went to the district council, argued the case. District council accepted the findings of the zoning hearing examiner. And this raises the first question in this case as to whether the district council's written decision conformed with Maryland's jurisprudence regarding the articulation of its findings of fact and conclusions of law. It also raises legal issues, which I'll get to in a moment. But with respect to the articulation issue, the district council decision at extract 563, in one sentence, one sentence incorporates the zoning hearing examiner's decision as the basis of his decision. And my clients assert that that one sentence incorporation does not conform with Maryland's jurisprudence with regard to the obligation of the tribunal to articulate what it did and why. Of course, that's the Foreman case and others. Now, there's a body of law that talks about the circumstances in which a tribunal may incorporate the findings of, for example, a staff report. And Judge Harold addressed that in the Greater Baden case about 15 years ago. And we can all read, it's in a footnote, I think it's footnote nine, we can read it, but this is my sense of that footnote. Judge Harold said in that footnote, we don't encourage the process of incorporating by reference the findings of, say, a staff report. But we can live with it if the tribunal incorporates it into the body of its decision, makes changes to it, makes additions to it. And what I take away from his rationale is that the evidence of putting the findings in the body of a report, the act of changing portions of it, the act of making additions to portions of it, manifests the agency's independent fact finding process. So I think that's what the law is. And then, just last Thanksgiving, this court, a different panel, but this court in the Elbert case issued a reported opinion where, this is the Elbert case, 259 Maryland App 499, where the appellate court of Maryland vacated and remanded a decision by the Charles County Planning Commission because it did precisely what the district council did in this case, which is simply to incorporate by reference the findings of a staff report or a third party without making any independent changes or additions to it. So we assert that this decision by the district council to articulate in one sentence the fact that incorporated by reference the factual findings of the zoning hearing examiner fails as a matter of law and requires this court to vacate the decision of the district council and order for a redo. Now, in response to all of this, my adversaries argue the Templeton case. The Templeton case is from 1974. The cases we're relying on are from Thanksgiving of 2023. And in Templeton, that case, since 1974, half a century ago, has been cited in two reported opinions. In the first reported opinion, 1980, there was no reference to, they weren't addressing articulation issue. And in the second opinion, 1987, it was cited in a footnote. But this is not a case that's figured prominently in Maryland's jurisprudence, at least in my opinion. And I would urge the court to follow the Greater Baden case and the Elbert case. So for those reasons, on the articulation issue, we urge the court to vacate and remand to the district council for a redo on the articulation issue. Now, I also now wish to raise some legal issues. And this is a little awkward because now we have to assume that district council, I'm assuming hypothetically that the district council has the authority to incorporate reference what the zoning hearing examiner did. So although I'm talking about that this is what the district council did, it's really, it's the words of the zoning hearing examiner. So we have this legal question. I opened my remarks by saying that the zoning ordinance requires the applicant to prove that the rezoning will not substantially impair the integrity of the applicable plans, will not substantially impair the integrity of the applicable plans. The district council found through the zoning hearing examiner that my clients failed to prove that there would be a substantial impairment. And we urge that, we urge this court to reverse that determination because it's incorrect legally for several reasons. But first, with respect to substantial impairment, there are a lot of rules about comprehensive plans and master plans. And if I can summarize my thinking of it, this is how I view it. We know from Greater Baden and other cases that if the ordinance says an application must conform or if the regulations addresses the master plans, you need to follow the regulation. If the regulation ordinance is silent, these master plans are advisory. That's what the Greater Baden case and others say. And then we have this questionable, if you have to adhere to or address or determine that a plan isn't inconsistent with a master plan, how do you reconcile that if the master plan has conflicting goals and objectives, some of which might support the application, some of which might reject the application? And the Archer's Glen case, Judge Arler's case from 2008, 176 Maryland App 292, I think informs this analysis, and Judge Arler, I didn't realize this till a few months ago, but that is the only case in Maryland's jurisprudence that I'm aware of that talks about how you reconcile these competing goals. And we can all read that opinion, but this is my takeaway from that opinion, which is Judge Arler said, if you have a master plan, which is a regional, a county wide document, and if you have multiple goals and objectives, some of which support the application, some of which would suggest no, the project should not go forward, the fact finders got to balance those and make a judgment about those competing goals and objectives. But the court spoke in terms of a balancing process. And here, there was no such balance analysis, the district council. The district council said Nelson's clients failed to prove it. Of course, we don't have the burden, we'll get to that in a moment, but there was no balancing. And so for those reasons, we would ask the court to reverse the decision of the district council. Now, let me talk about the burden, because I've been touching on this, and I just have two minutes left here in my opening remarks. The burden of proof is unequivocally on the applicant, unequivocally. The district council imposed the burden of proof on my clients. Extract 414, these are the words of the zoning hearing examiner, of course. I cannot find that the approval of the mixed-use development on the subject property will substantially impair the applicable plans. That's a 180-degree reversal of the burden of proof. The burden is on the applicant and the zoning hearing examiner, as adopted by the district council, rejected our client's argument, my client's argument, on the theory that we failed to prove that there would be a substantial impairment, when in fact, they had to prove there was no substantial impairment. So for those reasons, we also ask for an outright reversal. I'm going to save my last eight minutes. I'm going to address the principle about whether, in this case, there was a requirement that the tribunal consider the substantial impairment issue. So I see my time is about over, so I'll step down now. Thank you for allowing me to address this. I'll be back shortly.
Thank you. I see Mr. Whitley and Mr. Kumar, you're splitting your time based on issue maybe?
Yes. Morning. Please, this is the court. I'm Dennis Whitley III with the law offices of Shipley and Horn. I'm here on behalf of the appellate applicant. I'm going to take my argument a little bit out of order and address the last argument made by Mr. Nelson. Specifically, I ask the court to look at section, extract 414, for the proposition that the hearing examiner shifted the burden to the citizens with reference to proof of the requirements for the MXT rezoning. If the court looks at the actual language in paragraph 10 on 414, I'm going to read it, zoning hearing examiner speaking. I can no longer find that the request will substantially impair the functional master plans, and this is the key part, since the applicant have or were able to prepare a natural resource inventory that satisfied the approving authorities' regulated, the approving authorities' regulated environment features are shown and will be protected. So the ZAG made that decision because the applicant, who had the burden of proof, was able to submit a report that satisfied that burden of proof. The language there in no way infers that the zoning hearing examiner put the requirements on the citizens. The zoning hearing examiner's decision was based, or her determination was based on the fact that the applicant provided evidence in the record that satisfied the requirements. So I just wanted to address that because that was the last argument made, and I think that that was an easy argument to dispel. Because again, if you read the actual language in the report, it's clear why she made her decision, and it's clear that it didn't have anything to do with shifting the burdens to the citizens. Next issue I'm going to address, I believe Mr. Nelson has given up the argument that the district council could not adopt the zoning hearing examiner's findings and facts and conclusions of law. What I believe I heard him say is that in order for it to be acceptable, you have to cut and paste the actual language from the ZAG's decision and put it in your opinion. I do not believe that that's the current state of Maryland law. The fact that they made reference to it, it's clear to the appellant, it's clear to this board, what they were doing. So if a judicial review was needed, it's clear what the basis of the district council's decision was. And let's look at what we're talking about.
Say a little bit more than that, that there is not, you have to cut and paste it, but also you have to, there has to be some interaction or?
Well, the difference in this case and the Baden case, the Baden case, there was a technical staff report. In this case, there was a evidentiary hearing by the ZAG. The ZAG is an employee of the district council. The ZAG basically took the evidence. They took the technical staff report. They took testimony from the experts. It took the reports from the experts. And then the ZAG made a determination, the ZAG balanced all of those competing interests that Mr. Nelson said that didn't happen. The ZAG did that as an employee of the district council. So the district council was able to incorporate the decision of their employee that did all those things that Mr. Nelson said that the district council should have done. The district, the ZAG is basically, you know, for lack of a better term, a trial court for the district council. So all those competing interests were considered. You know, the technical staff report, which Mr. Nelson relied on so heavily during the evidentiary hearing, it was put to scrutiny. The technical staff report was reviewed by expert geologists, by expert traffic studies, by land planners. All of those folks took the technical staff report and testified to the ZAG as to where the shortcomings and where they disagreed with the technical staff report. And that convinced the zoning hearing examiner that, hey, you know what, the technical staff report, which was a one-sided document that had not gone through any scrutiny, was incorrect. So that's the difference between the Baden case and what we have in front of us. You know, there are technical staff reports, which are typically parking planning cases. And then there's the ZAG, the rezoning, which is a zoning hearing examiner case. So again, there's an evidentiary hearing that happened in this case that didn't happen in the Baden case.
And once that evidentiary hearing occurs, just kind of getting to the issue of the authority at that point, they can, they can do what they need to do, right? I mean, that's generally how it seems to read, but?
Mr. Kumar will speak to that probably a little bit more, since he represents the district council. But yes, the district council can totally accept the zoning hearing examiner's decision, they can reject it, they can do what they feel is appropriate based on that decision, based on that record.
That's because it's, the master plan is advisory. Am I?
Exactly, that's, yes.
Okay, I want to hear more.
And since you brought that up, I'll address that. The Court of Appeals in the Zimmer case makes clear that plans are advisory unless there's a statutory instrument that makes them mandatory. That's not the case in this particular case. There's no statutory, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance, there's nothing in the subdivision regulations, there's nothing, any approved application that makes this mandatory. It's advisory. And what I'd also point out to the court, to the extent that there's a disagreement between the applicant and the citizens, let's see, in Maryland Aviation Administration versus Nolan, the Court of Appeals said, to the extent that there's a disagreement between the parties, the agency's interpretations and applications of the statutory or regulatory provisions that it administers should be afforded great weight. The expertise, oh, and the expertise of the agency and its own field should be respected. So again, the agency can determine whether or not there's a regulatory device that would escalate the provisions of the zoning ordinance, I mean, the provisions of the plan to a mandatory, as opposed to a mandatory requirement. And again, I'll leave something for Mr. Kumar to address, but it's clear from the record that there's nothing that they can point to that says you shall conform to these plans. Next issue I'm going to address is the appellant's made the argument that this court should look to variance use law and the state of New Jersey to determine the definition of substantially impair for a Maryland rezoning case. I think that that's a legal stretch. The ZAG and ergo the district council, because they accepted her decision, correctly relied on the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. Section 27, 108.01a7 states explicitly that words and phrases not specifically defined or interpreted in this subtitle or the Prince George's County code shall be construed according to the common and generally recognized usage of the language. Technical words and phrases and others that have acquired special and appropriate meanings in the law shall be construed according to that meaning. Both parties agree that the term substantially impair is not defined in the zoning ordinance or the code. Both parties agree that Maryland law has not, that we're not able to find any Maryland law that defines that interpretation. So the county code requires, in that situation, that you give the words their ordinary and standard meaning. And what's a more objective, reasonable manner to give words their ordinary and standard meaning? You go through the dictionary. Dictionary is, it's objective. So the ZAG took the words, took the definitions from the dictionary, put them together, applied them to the statute. I don't know what's more reasonable and objective than that. And based on that, there's no need to look to New Jersey law on use variance to try to determine what you should do with a Prince George's County zoning case. There are a lot of issues in the brief, so I'm trying to hit as many as I can in the time that I have left. I've taken them out of orders of court indulgence. Next, I'm going to go ahead and I'll hit, because this is a quick, opposing counsel, or the citizens argued that there's no evidence in the record to support the ZAG's determination that there's adequate traffic facilities. That's just not the case. I'm not going to belabor the point. We've cited in our brief, their expert parking, their parking expert testified that he did the traffic analysis, the traffic analysis came back adequate, that the technical staff agreed with the traffic analysis. And he also testified that he ran the analysis using the road system as it exists and the road system as it will exist based on a tip that's fully funded. The next issue I'm going to hit, the other side made reference that there was no substantial evidence in the record to support the ZAG's decision, interpretation that they would not substantially impair the plans. Again, it's just an overwhelming amount of evidence in the record. We had the testimony of at least three, two witnesses, Mr. Jacob McCarthy, an expert wetland ecologist with experience in preparing natural resource studies and wetland delineation reports. Mr. McCarthy walked the property, took pictures of what was there, and produced a report that said there are no regulated streams on this property. And he directly disagreed with the technical staff report. He actually went and walked the property. He prepared a report where he said, I disagree with the technical staff report, which Mr. Nelson, or which the citizens are relying on. So we have contradictory evidence. Mr. McCarthy's recommendation was backed up also by Ryan McAllister, an accepted expert in the area of landscape architecture. He testified that he walked the entire 61 acres. He prepared a cursory stream evaluation report that included maps and photographs, and that he agreed with the assessment of Mr. McCarthy. Even furthermore, there was a remand, the district council remanded this case back to the zoning hearing examiner because there were issues about regulating the streams. And the zoning hearing examiner at the remand summarized the supporting evidence from the remand hearings. And what she said is, at this time, there's an NRI, the wetlands stream report, delineation plan, Corps of Engineers jurisdictional determination, as well as the forest standard delineation, all have been reviewed and approved by the regulatory agencies, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the Maryland National Capital Parking Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
May please the court and council, if the court would just indulge me for maybe a minute to read one opening paragraph to set the tone of our argument. Settled since 1936 by the Supreme Court of the United States, later by this court and the General Assembly through the RDA, the district council may designate an examiner to take evidence and render a preliminary determination in a contested zoning case, subject to the final review of the district council. The district council may do so solely by a considered review of the evidence, legal arguments, written record alone, and it may not physically attend the presentation of evidence, because it may hear the evidence by making an informed judgment on the evidence through the examiner. This case is exactly that case, from the Morgan versus United States and Yonkin versus Oates from the Supreme Court of Maryland. In this case, the thing that is not challenged is the compatibility of the rezoning in this case. Under Zimmer, the central question that must be asked when you're rezoning a property from a Euclidean zone to a floating zone is whether or not the zoning body made the general findings that the rezoning meets the general requirements of the zoning ordinance and is compatible with the neighborhood. The citizens have not challenged that question here at all today. That's not before the court. We understand they're arguing some other points, which I will address now. But this court should be aware that in Zimmer, it was very clear that if the body makes the decision that is compatible with the neighborhood, then that is the central test you must start from, because it's considered a legislative action. It's not, even though it's quasi-judicial, it amounts to a legislative action. So we are arguing here, that's not before this court, because they didn't raise that argument below, nor in their briefs here today. With respect to the change of mistake argument, they have abandoned that argument. And they have also, in their papers, they made an argument that the reason the council needed to make independent factual findings is because of the change of mistake rule. That has since been abandoned. The second argument that they're hanging their hat on is that, on the statutory interpretation. The problem there is, when, once we adopted the ZAG's interpretation of the statute, it is our own. So this court has before it whether or not it was error. There was no need for the district council to make a separate independent fact finding on the statutory interpretation. It adopted the ZAG's, and that was their own. The grand case from the Supreme Court of Maryland confirms that the district council can adopt the ZAG's finding or make independent factual findings if it decides to go against the recommendation that the ZAG made. With respect, and by the way, this court, in addressing a floating zone, Euclidean zone to a floating zone, was decided in the city of Hyattsville versus Prince George's County, 254 Maryland, won. Judge Arthur wrote that opinion, so we know for purposes of this case, this was a floating zone rezoning, so therefore, that's the standard you must address. On question one, the argument that we're making is that the distinction here between a staff report and a planning board's decision, one, Baden dealt with a preliminary plan of subdivision. It does not have to do with rezoning. The staff report is done before an evidentiary hearing. In this case, because there's a different body who's making the determination, which is the ZAG, we can stand in the shoes of the ZAG or vice versa, because that's the delegation from the General Assembly. So there's a huge distinction here between the staff report not being sufficient for the planning board to rely on, because the planning board is conducting the evidentiary hearing. Here, the staff report comes first, then the ZAG conducts an evidentiary hearing, and then we, because we have delegated that task to the ZAG, if that report comports with the findings that we believe are adequate to support the rezoning, then that's sufficient. We do not have to do an independent document. And by the way, when Mr. Nelson, on behalf of the appellant, talked about there's one sentence, that's not accurate. If you look at E 562, which is the zoning ordinance one of 2022, we actually go through the procedural history of this case, and by the procedural history of this case, and by the whereas clauses, and ultimately adopting those whereas clauses, we are actually saying, we have considered the record as a whole. This was not just a one sentence saying, "We adopt the ZAG and it's over." We are actually setting up what happened, and how it happened, and why we're adopting the ZAG's decision. So the court should look at that as well. On question two, the compliance with the plans, this is very important. This court, Chief Judge Wells, in Bradley-Hurd case, has squared this topic. It's 256 Maryland F 586 of 2022. Mr. Nelson has argued, since the great Baden case is all the way through, the different renditions of that case, that you have to have plan compliance. This court has rejected that, because plan compliance comes into play preliminary plan of subdivision. It does not come into play at a zoning map amendment, or DSP, or CSP. Now, there may be some instances where that may happen, but it's not here. So the elements that we have to satisfy here is whether or not the proposed rezoning complies with the purposes of the MXT zone. And that was done here. The ZAG made the findings, she made compatibility findings, and she also found that it did not substantially impair the plan. It's very important to dispel this notion that this case should be reversed or remanded because of plan compliance. Bradley-Hurd has solved that question in 2022. The Scully-Bozart Post case, decided from New Jersey, is not applicable, because it's a variance case. And more importantly, the circuit court, even though you look through that decision, Judge Grayson Kelsey found that there was no evidence in the record that the citizens offered, that the finding by the ZAG was erroneous, because she relied on a plain meaning of substantial impairment. The improper shifting of the burden, that one sentence is completely out of context. If anything you can read from that sentence is that the district council was persuaded that the applicant carried his burden, because when the evidence can, when you have evidence can go make a decision one way or the other, it's all fairly debatable. And here, we didn't have to grant the rezoning. We could have said, "You met everything you have done, but we're going to keep the property in that zone." But that's not, that's not the standard that must be followed. It's considered fairly debatable, and that's what happened here. And the last thing is on substantial evidence, as this court has said in Cremins, city of Hyattsville, and other cases, even if there's substantial evidence that are contracted, it's whether the final decision of the body is based on substantial evidence. With those arguments, we ask you to affirm. Thank you.
Counsel for the appellants have argued to the court that this case is different from the traditional articulation case, because the zoning hearing examiner is an employee of the district council. My short response to that is, no case in Maryland's reported jurisprudence says that. No case supports the theory that there's a different rule respect to articulation if the person who wrote the opinion was an employee of the district council. Instead, my adversaries rely on the Templeton case, and I urge that court, this court, to review it. It's from half a century ago. It's been cited twice, only once in a footnote for the articulation issue. I urge the court to review that and weigh that against the great Baden decision and this court's decision from last Thanksgiving in Albert. And just as a footnote, counsel for, the district council referenced the Supreme Court's decision in Grant, which was another zoning case, where the council wrote a 51-page opinion. Now, to be sure, it was a reversal of the zoning hearing examiner, but that case talks about how the council needs to put in writing what it was doing and why. So I respectfully suggest that Maryland's jurisprudence does not support the theory that there's a different set of rules if the decision that's being affirmed is by the zoning hearing examiner as opposed to the staff report. You know, my adversaries have mocked our reliance on the New Jersey case. I'll just respond very quickly by saying, the Archer's Glen opinion, I believe, is the only case in our reported jurisprudence that talks about how you balance these competing goals. And what struck me about the New Jersey case is, it was, sure, it's a variance case, but it's looking at the phrase "substantial impairment," and it's talking about balancing in a way that Judge Ily was talking about 15 years ago, and so I thought, for that reason, it was informative. With respect to the requirement issue, we know from Maryland's jurisprudence that if the ordinance says you need to consider the general plans, you got to do it. If the ordinance is silent, they're advisory. So this is the language that we rely on. This is the language in the ordinance that we say requires the district council to give credence to the plan. Section 27-213A2, "Prior to approval, the council shall find, prior to approval, the council shall find that the proposed location will not substantially impair the integrity of the various plans." Shall find that the proposed location will not substantially impair. So as an advocate for my clients, I look at that sentence, and I say, "What does that mean?" What that means is, the council must go through the process of analyzing whether the proposed lake, must go through the process of analyzing whether the proposed location will substantially impair the various plans. This is not an advisory optional requirement. It's a mandatory requirement, and I urge the court to find that such a requirement existed and that the council ignored that. Now, let me address the burden of proof. And we're looking, the key page is extract 414, extract 414, and if the court has, it might be helpful to look at it. And the parties agree that the applicant has the burden under the ordinance, so we say, we direct the court to paragraph 11, the second sentence, quote, "I cannot find that approval of mixed-use development on the subject property will substantially impair either the general plan or the master plan." That's the language where we say, they switched the burden of proof. They imposed the burden on my clients, and they found that my clients didn't prove it, therefore, we lose. Error of law.
I'm not sure I follow why you interpret it that way. I mean, let me explain. Sitting as a trial judge...
I'm sorry?
Sitting as a trial judge, trial judges find facts, and so a judge can say, "I find a certain fact." When a judge finds a certain fact, burden of proof sort of goes out the window, because the judge just found it as fact. Or the judge says, "I'm not finding this as a fact." But how does that equate to the burden of proof?
I'm just reading the words in the sentence, extract 414. "I cannot find that the approval will substantially impair..."
Yeah, he's just saying, he or she is just saying, "I'm not finding that it will substantially impair." Doesn't say who has the burden of proof on proving it.
Forgive me for pushing back just a little. I think...
Well, you may push back. You're an advocate.
The law requires the applicant to prove that there will be no impairment. The language is, "The applicant, the district council shall find the proposed location will not substantially impair." So the trial judge or the fact finder must say to himself or herself, "Has the applicant proved that the proposed location will not substantially impair?" That's the test, and here, what the zoning hearing examiner said is just the opposite. "I cannot find that it will substantially impair." So it, the law requires her to find that it will not, which is the applicant's burden. Instead, she said, "We didn't prove that it did." So with all due respect to the court and the court's experience, you know, long experience, I disagree with the assertion that that sentence does not speak to the burden of proof. Now, my adversary directed the court to paragraph 10 at extract 414, and I would just ask the court to look at that. And he says, "Look, this answers the question. This shows that the zoning examiner properly applied the burden." And, but paragraph 10 is talking about one small part of the problem of the application, the functional master, correction, we're talking about the natural resource inventory. That's the environmental inventory of the site. We're talking about conformance with the master plan, the general plan, the master plan, and we've established through the staff report all the many ways in which this plan conflicts with those documents. So for all those reasons, we ask the court to vacate for the failure, the agency's failure to articulate its decision in accordance with the requirements of Maryland law. And we also urge the court to reverse outright because of the legal errors and the lack of substantial evidence to support the decisions. For all those reasons, we make that request, and we appreciate, on behalf of my clients, the court's attention to these land use cases. We know they're complicated and arduous and tedious, but they're important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Case is submitted. We'll take a break.